Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Riska, can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saraski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Before we get to the report from the city manager tonight, I do want to just take a moment to recognize a former council member in the city of Sterling Heights who died recently. Councilman Bowman Chung was a councilman who served in the city of Sterling Heights in the 70s and 80s. He died on September 18th at the age of 93. He was appointed to fill a seat in 1974 after a number of council members were recalled. And one thing that he was incredibly proud of and his family said he cherished until the day he died was the opportunity in 1980 to go visit the White House. The entire city council and mayor were invited by President Jimmy Carter to come out when they turned the Volkswagen plant, or it allowed the Volkswagen plant to exist where it used to be a federal missile plant. And that, of course, is now the site of the Sterling Heights Assembly Plant for Chrysler FCA where the Dodge 1500s are produced. So that's a long storied history at that facility. And, you know, there was a nice write-up in the newspaper about Councilman Chung, and we thank him for his role in leading this community. And I'd ask for a brief moment of silence in his honor and memory. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me begin by reminding everyone that Columbus Day will be on Monday, October 14th, and city offices will be closed for an in-service training day for staff. So you will not have access to the public facilities on the city campus. There'll be no interruption, however, in refuse collection. Any questions about hours of operation, feel free to call our Community Relations Department. Again, that's Columbus Day, Monday, October 14th. And as you know, there's a very important millage renewal question on the ballot for which registered voters in Sterling Heights will have the opportunity to vote on, on November 5th. To ensure that voters have as much information about this very important issue, we have a presentation prepared for tonight. And the presenters will include our Police Chief Dale Dwojekowski, our Fire Chief Chris Martin, our City Engineer Brent Bayshaw. And we will start, however, with our Finance and Budget Director Jennifer Varney. And we'd like to proceed now with that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, city residents, Mr. Kachubski, and members of council. In 2013, city residents were offered an opportunity to shape the future of Sterling Heights through the Safe Streets Millage, a ballot proposal providing dedicated funding for police and fire operations and neighborhood road improvements. This November 5th, just a little over a month from today, voters will have an opportunity to renew the Safe Streets Millage and allow the city to continue the amazing progress it has made over the last six years. The Safe Streets Renewal will continue the millage at a rate of 2.45 mils for 10 years, slightly less than the original rate. The millage will raise $3.6 million annually for repair and reconstruction of neighborhood streets and $7.4 million annually to support police and fire operations. So what can residents expect to see over the next 10 years if the millage is renewed? First of all, you will see improvements to over 250 more neighborhood streets. You will see a fully-staffed professional police force that contributes to our ranking as the sixth safest large city in the country, and we will be able to avoid the layoff of 45 police officers. And also a fully-staffed professional fire department contributing to our current ISO rating of two, which is one of the highest in the state and directly impacts the rates residents pays for homeowners insurance. And we'll be able to avoid the layoff of 20 firefighters and keep all five fire stations operational. So how much will residents continue to pay if Safe Streets is renewed? The average taxpayer will pay only $15 per month for the millage. And again, this is a millage renewal, so the amount is already included in the current taxes that we are paying right now. It is not a tax increase. So why does the city still need this millage to support operations? As shown here, despite inflationary increases in taxable value, the city is still collecting less operating tax revenue than we collected in 2008. The police and fire portion of the Safe Streets Millage simply closes the gap and keeps us at operating revenue levels equal to those from over 10 years ago. Due to losses in property values and cuts by the state of Michigan in revenue sharing and road funding, the city has cumulatively lost nearly $160 million since 2003. The Safe Streets Millage allows the city to recover a small portion of what we have lost and continue to operate at the high level that residents have come to expect. Even with the Safe Streets Millage, the total property tax bill for the average Sterling Heights resident has risen an average of less than 1% annually since 2007. I can't think of one other household bill that has increased at such a low rate over the last decade. And Sterling Heights continues to give residents great value for their tax dollar, ranking the lowest amongst our comparable communities in tax revenue collected per resident, and continuing to have one of the lowest millage rates in Macomb County. And continuing to provide outstanding services to our residents at the lowest employee-to-resident ratio of our comparable communities. We are truly a very lean organization. And now I will turn it over to our City Engineer, Brent Bayshaw, who will discuss the amazing progress we have made in our neighborhood streets.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, city council, Mayor Taylor, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kachubski, and residents of Sterling Heights. The neighborhood road network is a vast network. It contains almost 300 miles of roads, which, to give you an idea how much that is, if you stretch that out from here, build a two-lane road, you could get from here to Chicago. So that's the amount of local roads we have to maintain in the city of Sterling Heights. The majority of these roads were built with the developments in the subdivisions, so the average age of these roads exceeds 40 years, and many of these roads are in deteriorated condition. The map shown highlights the improvements to the neighborhood road system since Safe Streets was approved in the fall of 2013. The red lines shown on the attached map show the 2019 improvements, many of which have been completed. And the blue lines highlight the streets that were completed in the first five years of the Safe Streets Millage. A renewal of the Safe Streets in the fall of 2019 would allow for these improvements to continue over the next 10 years at the same rate. Neighborhood roads have been improved in various methods throughout the city, and the most common is a concrete full-width reconstruction. An example of this is Balsam Way, which was constructed in 2016. Another example of a neighborhood road improved as a result of the Safe Streets approval was Hornbeam Drive. This road was experiencing joint failure and was regularly being cold-patched. Hornbeam was reconstructed in 2017, and that only provides a maintenance-free road for safe travels, but improves the look of the whole neighborhood. As a final example, I'd like to highlight Island Drive off Hayes Road. This improvement completed in 2018 with Safe Streets funds allows for the drive and drive approach to be reconstructed. This improvement allows for drivers to focus on traffic and their turning movements without focusing on dodging potholes at the same time. So what has the recent improvements done to the local road system as a whole? The graphs shown chart the trend of the pavement condition since 2013. The graph on the left side of the screen charts the amount of roads rated in good condition at the beginning of Safe Streets, and the amount of good roads totaled 7% in 2013. The Safe Streets expenditure over the last six years resulted in increase in pavement rated in good condition to 16%. Additionally, over the last six years, the number of roads in poor condition had been reduced from 11% in 2013 to 9% in 2019. And a Safe Streets renewal would allow for these trends to continue. 252 neighborhood roads have been improved since 2013. Of these 252 roads, 109 received full-width replacement or resurfacing, and another 143 roads received significant full-width sectional concrete repairs. With the Safe Streets renewal, over 250 additional roads would be improved, with the majority being full-road replacements. Of course, neighborhood roads aren't just a facet of our road system as a whole. The major road network is the other large component. The road, major road system is master-planned through 2022, and starting in 2014 with the commencement of the Van Dyke Reconstruction Project, numerous funding sources has allowed for and will allow for improvements to the highlighted roads in orange over this timeframe. As you can see, a vast majority of the major roads in the city will receive improvement at a total investment of $416 million to be seen over this timeframe. I'd now like to turn the presentation over to Police Chief Dale Dwojekowski.
Thank you, Brent, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool. Tonight is a story of success. We passed Safe Streets six years ago, and not only has the police department maintained our excellent level of public safety, but we've added to that, police department. And I'd like to brag a little bit about our police department tonight and what we've accomplished with Safe Streets. Just starting last year, we developed a program called Smart Moves. This is a 10-week-long program. It's in all 19 elementary schools in Sterling Heights. 1,500 kids a year get this program. There's a dedicated police officer for every single elementary. We teach them the dangers of vaping, smoking, drinking, drugs, inappropriate social media use. The kids love the class. They get a T-shirt at graduation time. Parents love it. It's been a highly successful program, again, due to Safe Streets and the funding and keeping officers on the road. Our K-9 unit, we had one K-9 as of December. We added two brand-new K-9s in December. So now we're, we had three, and tonight we're announcing the addition of our fourth K-9. You guys all get to see it tonight. So we now will have four K-9 units to patrol the streets of Sterling Heights, keeping everyone safe. There's our original three. And then our School Resource Officer Program, we had one full-time officer assigned to Sterling Heights High School, and then about a year and a half ago, I met with Utica Community Schools, Dr. Johns. We talked about the need of having a full-time officer at Stevenson and Henry Ford, and through a cost-sharing program, we are able to put full-time officers at Henry Ford High School and Stevenson High School. And I'm proud to say now, all three high schools have a full-time sworn officer trained to handle any crisis in those high schools. This is our Citizens Police Academy. This went away after the recession, almost 10 years. We just brought it back. We're just starting another session last week. Our residents get to go through 10 weeks. They get to actually go to the gun range, shoot our service pistols, and they get to see our police department, our jail. They get to see all the different things that we do at the police department, guest lectures from our Detective Bureau, drug unit, K-9 Division. It's free of charge for our residents, and our residents love this program. We run two sessions a year. Our core program, very successful, it's our Neighborhood Police Officer. As you can see in that map, our city is divided into six different districts, and we have a Neighborhood Police Officer for each of those districts. If you have a problem or concern, you don't want to call 911, you call your core officer, and they will handle the problem. They do this all day, every day. Some of the events they do, like walk with a core officer in our local parks, visiting lemonade stands, food drives at our local grocery stores, they get involved in everything. Our drug unit, our brand-new, just created, Bill Dwyer, the Commissioner, and Warren and myself met with the DEA. We talked about the opiate epidemic and the number of overdoses, and we started a brand-new drug unit in cooperation with the DEA. And this just got started this spring. We have our five police departments and the DEA. We've already made dozens of high-profile arrests here in Macomb County and brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars in forfeiture money. We also started the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition less than two years ago. It's not about arresting everybody for drug crimes. You also have to give them treatment and rehabilitation options, because if you don't, they're going to both be out again, offending, breaking into houses, into cars. And I'm proud to say our Drug Free Coalition is getting people help. We've done dozens of public events, and our Drug Free Coalition's been very successful. ICAC, the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, that's Detective Lindsay Pappas, she's one of our detectives. She is assigned out part-time to the Michigan State Police, and she tracks down child sexual predators. With the Michigan State Police, they get leads and tips about who's trading in child internet crimes against children and child pornography, and she's tracking these people down. We've already made a couple of arrests here locally. So, again, reaching out, doing more with our people. And this was in an article Channel 7 ran that Sterling Heights was named the sixth safest city in the United States of America, big city. I'm proud to announce just yesterday, the FBI crime stats came out and Sterling Heights had another incredible year. And I'm very, very proud to announce that out of the 10 categories, the FBI tracks, Sterling Heights is lower in eight of the 10 compared to 2017 numbers. So we were safe, we're even safer, and I'd like to thank the men and the women of our Sterling Heights Police Department and all of our residents. It really is a group effort, but our crime stats came back, they were outstanding. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Martin.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool, and Mr. Kachubski. As you just saw, the police department's got a lot of amazing things going on that go above and beyond what the police officers on the road do on a daily basis. No different in the fire department. We have the Open House, the Civilian Fire Academy. We offer CPR classes. We team with the police department on smart moves, also Home Alone Safety and Babysitter Classes. But what I want to focus on tonight is what Safe Streets means to our ability to respond to the various 911 calls we receive. Back in the early '60s, the city founders decided on a plan on how to outfit the city with fire stations. And if you see here on this map, this is how we are laid out right now. There's five fire stations, kind of like a five on a dice, that are all around the city with one in the middle. And you'll see the different colored areas are what we call the first alarm district for each one of the stations. And they're designed to have a fire truck or an ambulance respond to any emergency within four minutes of travel time from that location. And it all works great, you know, everything given when all the stations are open and they're staffed. But with Safe Streets, one of the problems is we will be closing a fire station. And for us, response times is about everything. It's not just response times, it's the capability of what the firefighters can do when they get there. And it's about staffing and their training and all the things that go along with it. So if Safe Streets doesn't pass, as you've heard tonight, we'll have to lay off 20 firefighters. 18 of those will have to come from the 24-hour shift individuals, which is divided by the three shifts. That would be five per shift, or six per shift. And what we would have to do is permanently close Station Number Four on 15 Mile. This wasn't an easy decision. No fire station closing is an easy decision, but there's a lot of factors that went into that. But if you look at the map, you'll see what that does to the response district for Station One. To get to an area of like 15 and Shainer area, it'd be about seven or eight minutes versus the two minutes it would be for Station Four to get there if they were in service. That said, though, it might look bad for Station Four's area, but it really has an effect across the city, because all the other stations will have to respond to cover the areas of other apparatus that have left their station area for an incident. Not only would we have to close Station Four, but on day-to-day basis, we may have to close Station Five in what's called as a brownout. If firefighters are sick or injured, or too many of them are on vacation, and we can't get enough to cover them on overtime, or we don't have the budgeted funds for overtime, day-to-day, we'd have to make the decision whether or not to keep Station Five open. So on those days that Station Five's not open, you can see what that does with only having three stations in service. And again, that'd be detrimental to our response times across the board. So what do the response times mean to medical emergencies? Well, in a medical emergencies, whether it's a stroke or a heart attack, or somebody in cardiac arrest, every second counts to that person's ability to be able to recover. Fires double at least every minute. In car accidents, we deal with what's called the golden hour, where if somebody's dramatically injured in a car accident, they need to get to an emergency room and to have surgery within an hour. And so response times mean life and death to what the fire department responds to. Just as a couple of examples of what we've seen is our Survival Coin Program, which started in 2016. One of the recent council meetings, we had number 18 Survival Coin person come and visit city council and meet the people that responded to their aid. But what it really means is these are people that had a cardiac arrest, who walked out of the house neurologically with no neurological deficits. On the left is an individual who last year at Kroger went into cardiac arrest. Two bystanders started CPR until the fire department got there, and he's on his way to a full recovery. On the right is a 15-year-old young man who was at a restaurant on Van Dyke. He went into a cardiac arrest. Again, bystander CPR, CPR from the police officers, and then the fire department, when they responded, saved his life. He made a full recovery and actually went back to playing football this year. But statistically, since Safe Streets started, we have at least 60 people who have suffered a cardiac arrest, who have left the hospital with no neurological deficits. Since we've only been doing Survivor Coin for the last three years, we've only had 18, soon to be 20, that we're bringing to council. But we've had 60 since Safe Streets. So that's 60 lives that I can't guarantee would still be here if we didn't have the staffing that we have with Safe Streets. Not just with cardiac arrest, but with strokes and heart attacks, as you had a couple of visitors here a couple of council meetings ago, that talked about our ability to respond to strokes and to heart attacks, and the effect that we have on our ability with the response times and our capability, means a lot to those people and the way to get in their full recovery. And this is an example on the screen here of what we call a door-to-balloon time. Incident we had, it was 13 minutes from the time we got the person to the ER until their blockage in their heart was alleviated from having a stint put in. And that's pretty much a record time, and it's because of our capabilities and our response times. Last couple of years has been very busy for the fire department. We have a lot of major fires where our response times made the difference in life and death, literally. And I just want to highlight a couple of them. One was Seville Terrace, August 18th, 2017. This is an apartment building right down the street from Station Number Four. So Station Four is open. The five firefighters that responded from Station Four got to this apartment fire. There was a well-involved fire on the first floor and a victim trapped on the second floor. And those first-arriving five firefighters that were also backed up by the additional stations in the city were able to slow the fire and rescue the victim. Thankfully, nobody was hurt or killed in this fire. Christmas Day last year, probably one of the largest fires we've ever had in the city of Sterling Heights. We responded to the Sterling Troy Apartments. All 26 firefighters on duty that day responded, and all of them had to go to work in rescuing people. And with help from our Sterling Heights police officers and Troy police officers, dozens and dozens of lives were saved that day. Not one life was lost, and nobody was seriously injured. And that is only because of our ability to be able to put the firefighters on the scene because of our station layout and our response times and our staffing level. Back in July of 2017, we had a major fire at Buff Whalen. Originally, we thought there was a person trapped, so our capability and our staffing was able to search that building and make sure nobody was in there. But we also stopped the fire from spreading into the new showroom area. And the next day, they were able to open in the new showroom area because of our capability and our ability to respond. As already mentioned, tonight, we have an ISO rating, a couple of years ago, that went down, and we're among the highest in the state. And how this ISO rating came about was, most importantly, by our ability to respond to fires. What we had to show them was, in the prior year, every fire we had, what the response time was from the first engine arriving to the whole full complement of the first alarm response. And because of our stats of that previous year, that was the biggest factor that went into our ISO rating going down. One of the things we've started since Safe Streets was ALS Transport. Now, this was a program that, in its first year, allowed for us to take over 10,000 people to the hospital from the city of Sterling Heights, whether visitors or residents. And this was done with no additional funding to the fire department. We were able to put 15 more firefighters on the street and five ambulances because of our ability to collect reimbursement from the healthcare costs of your insurance from doing the transport. This has been a hugely successful thing, and without Safe Streets, it's unclear how it'll maintain throughout the years to come. That being said, I'd like to, on behalf of all the people that spoke tonight, just make sure that everybody knows it's important to vote. Make sure your voice is heard, and on November 5th, please get out and vote. Mr. Vanderpool, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And for those who would like more information, we have flyers that have a really good Q and A in them, if you'd like it for you or your neighbors. And also on our cable channel, we have a video that provides much more detailed information on Safe Streets. And lastly, on my agenda or report this evening, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act to consult with the city attorney regarding legal strategy in connection with the city's pending litigation in Circuit Court, case number 217-000052-AS. And Mayor, that concludes my report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool, and to everyone who presented under your report today. Thank you for that information. We have three presentations tonight. Our first presentation is to acknowledge and accept a donation to the Sterling Heights Police Department of a K-9 officer by Prevention Concepts and Solutions Incorporated and $1,000 for K-9 training supplies and equipment by Suburban Ford. We have a presentation from our Police Chief Dale Dwojekowski. Welcome back up, Chief Dwojekowski.
Thank you. If I can have Jason and Danny and Greg come on up here. You guys can stand right over here.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool. Tonight, I'd like to honor Jason Foltz of Prevention Concepts Solutions. Jason's in the middle here, and Danny is his partner, for a donation of a brand-new fourth K-9 unit. He's sitting right here. He is fresh, brand-new. That's K-9 Rich. And Greg Peterson, at the far right of Suburban Ford Sterling Heights, for graciously donating funding for our K-9 equipment. Jason's company, Prevention Concepts and Solutions, is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to improve the qualities of life for veterans, first responders, and others in the community. Through K-9 assisted therapy, as a result, have the ability to donate specially-trained K-9s for law enforcement, service dogs, and veterans. Jason, by the way, is also the grandson of Sterling Heights' first-ever police chief, Maurice Foltz. So it's kind of a weird story. We're thankful to have you. Owner Jason Foltz and lead K-9 trainer, retired U.S. Army veteran Danny Cusenza, are currently working with Officer Steele and previously with Officer Hines to help train these dogs. A Sterling Heights resident donated a young Dutch Shepherd male to Prevention Concepts and Solutions. Officer Steele and Officer Wallman, who has been working with the dog, saw the dog's potential. We were then approached about the dog, and with some conference with the city, we agreed to take on this fourth K-9. He's a great dog. Jason named the dog Rich to honor Officer Rich Hines, who passed away April of this year. K-9 Rich is currently 11 months old. He has social demeanor. He has social demeanor, listens well, and learns quickly. Prevention Concepts Solutions would like to donate the K-9 to the city of Sterling Heights at no charge. This is the first time since 1978 that the Police Department will have four canines, which will ensure coverage on the road in order to keep all of our residents safe. A little bit about our K-9 Division, we just went back to three dogs as of December 5th last year. And just in these short 10 months, we've had 238 deployments for K-9 services, assisted in 77 arrests, and 13 subject locations, which includes Alzheimer walkaways, missing juveniles, and criminal suspect tracks. They've also assisted in location over $500,000 in cash forfeiture. Next, I'd like to thank Greg Peterson of Suburban Ford Sterling Heights. When Greg heard of our possible addition to the Police K-9 Division, he immediately stepped up with Suburban Ford and donated $1,000 towards our K-9 supplies and equipment. So thank you to Greg and Suburban Ford Sterling Heights. With that, I'd like to present a plaque to Jason and Prevention Concepts and let him say a few words. Jason, thank you so much. Come on up here.
Chief, I think you pretty much covered all of what we do. I guess I just want to say thank you to the council for giving us this opportunity to be a part of the community and to give back, for our veterans to give back, the healing process that these dogs have from the therapeutic side is amazing. Giving them the opportunity to connect back to the community with a donation is amazing in itself, too. And I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to honor my grandpa and to make him proud today. Thank you.
Nightly, Greg Peterson with Suburban Ford, present you with this plaque and thank you for your cash donation for the K-9 equipment. Thank you very much.
On behalf of Suburban Ford, it's an honor to be part of such a wonderful program. Anytime we can give back to the community that supports us as much as you do, we obviously jump at the chance. To all the police officers, especially the K-9 unit, please be safe. And once again, thank you so much for everything you do.
If I could have Officer Kruger come up here as well. I'd like to announce our brand-new selected, we just figured out who this person was to be. We have a very intensive process to pick our K-9 handlers. And Officer Brian Kruger is our newly-appointed fourth K-9 officer. Our K-9 selection process involves a rigorous physical test, extensive interviews, in-home visit for suitability. We've had outstanding candidates apply for this coveted position, and Brian was selected. Congratulations, Brian. And at this time, I'd like to invite council to come down and meet not only K-9 Rich, but the rest of his partners, Ernie, Groot, and Ivy. So we're going to bring them in, the whole gang, and come down and say hello.
Sure. I don't know if they're going to try to...
Well, they're in the back now.
I don't know how we're going to see each other.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Being here, I appreciate it.
Do you get pictures?
I do.
Yeah, that's Groot. He's the sassy one.
Oh, no, honey.
No, honey, that's his daddy.
Michael.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we do actually have a suggested action. Is there anyone that would like to make that motion? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Radke?
Resolved to acknowledge generosity and accept the donation of K-9 Officer Rich by Prevention Concepts Solutions, Inc., and $1,000 for K-9 Training Supplies and Equipment by Suburban Ford.
Support. It's been moved in support. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank Suburban Ford and Prevention Concepts Solutions for their generosity and helping our city keep safe. Thank you so much.
Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Koski, of course. Mrs. Koski.
I, of course, would say I'm very, very pleased tonight. I'm so happy to see our fourth K-9 because that was something that Officer Hines wanted was for. So God's wish. Thank you very, very much.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
I just wonder if anybody wants to do a plug for the golf outing that you're going to have in Rich's honor?
Actually, they have pushed it to be 76.
Oh, okay. All right. What's coming? You'll give us another, we'll give us another chance to do that.
It's kind of optimistic there, December 6th.
Okay.
All right. Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Saroski?
I just want to thank you. I love having the police dogs. I think that it's such a great deterrent. I live with a retired military police dog. Nobody wants to come near my yard. So I understand they are excellent at what they do. They are great, not only great officers, but they're great ambassadors for our city. So wonderful to have, and I know Rich Hines is smiling very, very big right now. So thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Just want to thank everyone that's been a part of this. You know, Officer Rich Hines, for people out there that maybe never had the opportunity to meet him, was really somebody who built our K-9 unit here. He was passionate about the canines. And what a tremendous amount of work these dogs actually do to help keep us safe, to keep drugs off the street, and to help support our Police Department. And, you know, this is a great way of honoring Rich's memory and keeping him alive here in the city of Sterling Heights. So I want to thank you for your donation and for naming this dog after Rich. It's quite an honor, and we're going to miss Rich for a long, long time. But hopefully, this dog, Officer Rich, the K-9, can carry on his memory here. So thank you very much. Thank you to Elder Ford, and God bless the Police Department, and please stay safe out there, and thank you for all the work you do on our behalf. So without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you. All right. Moving on, the next presentation tonight is the 2019 Beautification Awards. We have a presentation from the Chairman of the Beautification Commission, Mr. Gary Isom. Mr. Isom?
Good evening. I'm Gary Isom, Chairperson for the Sterling Heights Beautification Commission. Tonight, it gives me great pleasure to present our 2019 Beautification Awards. The Sterling Heights Beautification Commission's mission is to encourage all city residents and property owners to preserve and enhance the beauty of public and private properties. One of the ways we do that is through our annual award ceremony, where we honor those who go above and beyond in beautifying their Sterling Heights properties. Tonight, we carry on that tradition here before this body. We thank you for welcoming this presentation as we showcase our residents and business leaders' dedication to make Sterling Heights a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. For the past five months, Beautification Commission welcomed nominations from citizens who wish to recognize a Sterling Heights property for outstanding beauty resulting from the planting of annuals and perennials. The Commission met and reviewed photographs taken of more than 60 nominated homes, businesses, and churches. Commissioners judge nominations selected only on superior properties that had that wow factor when seen from the curb. Commissioners selected winners based on overall beauty, aesthetics, artistic use of color. Awards tonight will be presented in the categories of commercial properties, multifamily properties, churches, and single-family residential homes. A best-of-the-best recipient will receive, will be honored in each of the categories. I'd like to thank all the Beautification Commissioners here tonight for their dedication to the program. Could you please stand? Joyce Ty, Nancy Kajek, and Lisa Lane. Could you please give them a hand? At this time, I'd like to invite Mayor Michael Taylor and members of the City Council to join me in the presentation of the 2019 Sterling Heights Beautification Awards. To the award recipients here tonight, when your name is called, please come forward to receive your award from Mayor Taylor. A photograph of the honored address will be shown on Sterling Heights TV and here on the video on the screen.
Commercial Properties. DeSanto Travel Center. The McComb Group. Multifamily Properties. Sterling Estates. American House. Arden Courts Memory Care Community. Shoal Creek Apartments. Nottingham Cove. Places of Worship. St. Jane Francis de Chantelle. Residential Properties. 37637 Elper Drive. Teresa DeRosa. 11540 Francis Drive. Sam and Evelyn La Gruta. 43466 Interlaken Drive. Donna Madonna. 34401 Amsterdam Drive. Lorenzo Howard. 11735 Seton Drive, D-21. Sharon Mason. 34801 Valley View Drive, D-14. Monica Gomolka. 11242 18 Mile Road. Greg and Susanna Schindler.
Congratulations.
Beautiful. Lovely. Thank you.
Dora Stajic. Charles and Gloria Stanley. 14202 Peterborough Drive. Carl and Vicky Kornak. 4466 18 and 1/2 Mile Road. Slavka Milikovic. 42107 Will Sharon Street. Richard and Erica Hoffman. Sandra Jamali. Christopher and Amy Hervnik. William and Gwendolyn Schob. Joe and Pat Wagner. Christopher and Lisa Smith. Kenneth and Barbara Milczynski. Fred and Ann Gibson. Zivko and Dasanka Krenogevic. 43243 Chardonnay Drive. 35749 Deering Drive. 14332 Brookings Drive. 13769 Heatherwood Drive. Bruce and Claire Arvo. 12467 Lakeshore Drive. Rick and Gail Strawn. 11773 Danforth Drive. 11336 Village Drive. And now for the best of the best. Places of Worship. Saint Matthias Catholic Church. 36239 Melbourne Drive. Wallace and Denise Bronson.
All right, Council, before everyone steps up and leaves, I will take a brief one second, please.
If I could, Mayor Taylor, I'd like to thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's beautification awards. I'd also like to extend a special thank you to Eckard's Greenhouse for their generosity and donate a $25 gift certificate to each nominee. And could everyone just please remain seated so the City Council may formally recognize tonight's recipients? And again, thank everyone, and thank you, City Council, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Isom. We do have a resolution tonight, Council?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Sarrowsky.
We're resolved to individually and collectively recognize the 2019 Beautification Award winners and thank them for the dedication and effort in making their properties, neighborhoods, and the city of Sterling Heights a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion?
Just want to say congratulations again to all the recipients. They are beautiful. It makes me very jealous, and I wish my house looked like that, but you can have to come and do it for me because I'm not going to do it. You did a lovely job, thank you.
Nice example, Mayor Protim.
Just being honest. So, thank you again. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else?
Well, on behalf of the entire City Council, we want to thank you for being here and for doing what you do. We think that when you take care of your yard and you maintain your house and you make it look nice, it's really contagious because one, good-looking house can change a neighborhood. The entire neighborhood will want to follow your example. And the opposite is true, too. So you guys do a lot to help keep this city looking as clean and presentable and beautiful as it is, so we really appreciate it. You know, you guys are what keep the residents, are what keep this city the great city it is, so thank you for all of your efforts. And with that, we will have a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. One more big round of applause. So I will take a brief, about five-minute recess at this point, so if you don't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, this is your cue. Again, thank you very much. So we'll stand in recess for about five minutes.
In the meeting back to order, we will move on to our next presentation tonight, which is a presentation in the Nice Neighbor Award. We haven't done too many Nice Neighbor Awards recently, but for this one, I'm going to call up Bob Maynard from Blessings in a Backpack to make a brief presentation. Mr. Maynard?
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. I'm with a group Blessings in a Backpack Utica. We're a charity organization supporting the Utica Community School District. This charity, last year in this community, we delivered 66,000, roughly 66,000 meals to children that may not have a consistent access to food on weekends. So they get a little cinch sack with six meals that they pick up on Friday, and they bring it back on Monday. We're always looking for volunteers. We're always looking for businesses to get involved, organizations, churches, and individuals. Packing is on Wednesdays at Bemis Junior High at 4:15 in the afternoon, but we always have lots of things going on. The purpose for me being here this evening is to give some special recognition. The Sterling Heights Police Officers Association and the Sterling Heights Fireman's Union Local 1557 have given not only financial support, which has provided thousands of meals this last school year, and again will supply thousands of meals this school year, but they also support us by attending events that we hold, by being a part of committees, by showing up and helping to pack sometimes on Wednesdays. So without any further ado, I'd like to present an award, if they're here, and there they are, to the Sterling Heights Police Officers Association and to the Sterling Heights Fire Department, Union Local 1557. If I could get them to join me, someone? Let's see how we do this here. This is for the Sterling Heights Police Officers Association. Gentlemen, I can't tell you how much we appreciate everything that you have done and everything that we hope you'll do in the future. For the Fire Department, again, thank you very much. It's great to have you as a part of our team, and we hope that you'll be on our team for a long time to come.
Now, before anybody leaves, we are also going to present the Nice Neighbor Award here, and for that, I'd like to hand it over to my colleague, Councilman Michael Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the entire City Council and the residents of Sterling Heights, we're proud to give Sterling Heights Police Officers Association and the Firefighters Local Union 1557 the Nice Neighbor Award, or in part, I'm going to read from the citation here. During the school year, Meyer Stores supplied 240 meals for each eligible child for $100. This translates into 66,000 meals being delivered in Sterling Heights alone. This tremendous outcome would not have happened without the SHPOA and local 1557 assistance in the form of financial support and volunteer hours every Wednesday to help pack six meals in a cinch sack that is distributed to children on Friday. Officers and firefighters also serve on committees and help strategic planning for program expansion. Thank you so much for all that you do. I'm going to come down here and give you another award, okay?
We have one for the Sterling Heights Police Officers Association first again. Congratulations. And we have a nice number of words for the Sterling Heights Fire Department, 1557.
Thank you.
All right, good job. Anyone, any one of you guys like to make any comments? Mark? Yep, go ahead.
Mike Conith, President of the Sterling Heights Police Officers Association, resident of Sterling Heights. I'm proud to support Blessings in a Backpack. I met Bob and his daughter, who is reluctant to stand up, but Wendy does as much work as Bob, but Bob's a face. So, but I would like to- So, but I would like to think this because people don't realize in Sterling Heights, we actually have children that need meals. And they stepped forward and they started this program. They had two elementary schools going. We were able to start last year and help them with Hayville Elementary. As some of you, you know, being residents of Sterling Heights, there's a lot of us in this room that had kids that go to Hayville Elementary, and we realized that more kids need our help. And we were happy this year. We did a couple of charity events, we sold T-shirts, we did a lot of work, both unions, to try to get more money for these kids so they have square meals on the weekends. I want to appreciate everyone that did all the work back there, and Bob Maynard and Wendy Castile for everything they've done. Thank you so much.
We do have a suggested action. Mr. Radke?
To present the Sterling Heights Police Officers Association and Sterling Heights Firefighters Union, IAFF, local number Fifteen Fifty Seven, the Nice Neighbor Award in recognition of their efforts to assist the community and contributions in making Sterling Heights overall quality of life second to none.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mr. Radke?
I think they've said everything that needs to be said. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
I agree. Council, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and one more round of applause. Great job. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item tonight's Consent Agenda? Start with you, sir.
Hello, my name is Kareem Mohammed. I'm a representative from PCSI. PCSI is a nonprofit that creates employment opportunities for any individual with any type of disability. That's our purpose and mission, and I just wanted to personally get up and thank each and every one of you for supporting our efforts in creating employment opportunities for citizens here in the great state of Michigan. As some of you know, we are based in Sterling Heights. Our Michigan office is in Sterling Heights. Our work is at the Detroit Arsenal in Warren, Michigan. We are a federal contractor that employs close to sixteen-hundred employees, most of which have disabilities. On behalf of PCSI, I just wanted to say again, thank you, and hopefully you'll come down and take a picture with me as I give you this year's theme for National Disability Employment Awareness Month, with the right talent at the right time.
Thank you very much. We'll come down after we vote on the Consent Agenda, okay? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the Consent Agenda? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. If you'll join me, council, we'll go and accept this on behalf of PSI. I know. Next item on our agenda tonight is a considera, consideration item, and this is to consider a request by Oakbrook Family Tree Parent Group for recognition as a local nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a State of Michigan charitable gaming license. Is there anyone in the audi, is the petitioner, would the petitioner like to make any, any comments? Or is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make any comments? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Resolved the request from Oakbrook Family Tree Parent Group of Sterling Heights, County of Macomb, asking that they be recognized as a local nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a State of Michigan charitable gaming license be considered for approval, provided, however, that this action is not an endorsement of the organization and the city of Sterling Heights should not be listed on any promotional materials associated with the charitable gaming activities.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
Sure, Mayor Taylor. Through, through the chair, is there a representative from this group here? Could I have you come forward, please? So just for clarification, it's quite a name. Is it, is it the PTO of the school?
It is the PTO of the school, yes, exactly what it is.
I just wanted to put that out there because I've never quite seen such a title for a PTO before.
We didn't either until we looked at the legal parts.
Okay, so that's really the only question I have. I wish you well. I know there, there's, you know, hoops you have to jump through now as nonprofits, and I've been involved with many along the way, so I wish you well and totally support your organization.
Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? If not, I'll just say, I wish you guys good luck. My wife is a former president of the Oakbrook Family Tree Parent Group, and so we're big supporters of the Oakbrook Family Tree and Oakbrook School and like everyone there, and so wish you guys good luck and, and hope you guys do great. So with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is a consideration item, and this is to consider appointments to city Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, this is a LDFA appointment. This is the mayor's appointment to a term ending June thirty, twenty twenty. I was hopeful to have an appointee at this meeting, but I'm just gonna be honest, things with the State of the City took over that last couple of weeks, and so I would ask for a, a request, a postponement of this item until the October fifteenth council meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any presentations or communications? Anybody? Mrs. Early.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and audience. I, sorry, Council Radke brought up a few weeks ago that he would like to have more, he was interested about housing programs, speaking about Ferndale and Ann Arbor. He also mentioned in his page about another city. I'm really interested to know if you had worked at city where there are areas that already had affordable housing. I went, you just need to Google. We don't need to spend time or resources checking what Ferndale or Ann Arbor is doing when you just Google and find the information. So my question will be, have you taken the time or I invite you to take the time to go to the places we have several around our city? I walk from north to south, east to west, and, and I know we do have it. So if you are interested, we don't need to spend that time from the administration to check it out. And residents are making the comment that we already have. Why do you want a government pay program? And I would like to mention and invite the residents to, for the meet the candidate that is gonna happen in two days, October third, at nine a.m. in this chamber. So if you are interested to come and see the candidates running for city council, that will be really nice. You can meet their candidates and have the opportunity to find out where they stand. And that is all. Have a happy rest of the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Early. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Mr. Romano.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kachubski. My name is Joe Romano, and the first thing I want to mention is that I am here unsolicited. I have not been able, not been asked to speak. I have not been pressured to speak. Nobody's asked me to come here to speak on this important issue. I have done so on my own volition.
I can assure you, nobody's asked you to be here.
And, and I wish I was as eloquent speaking as our illustrious mayor, and unfortunately I'm not. That's why I have to read. If any of you missed the State of the City, he winged it pretty good off of that prompter, but he really does a good job. But anyway, I'm a fifty-year resident. I'm here not only as a resident, but I'm also here as a county commissioner. I served twenty years on the city council, and I'm currently still serving the people of Sterling Heights as their county commissioner in District Four. All three of my children attended Utica schools, Bruce Collins, Heritage, and they all graduated from Stevenson. My wife and I, all during this time, have felt very safe and very comfortable in Sterling Heights. I'm a real estate broker, I've been one for well over forty years. I could have chosen to live anywhere. The deals that I've passed up on, to move out on, are numerous, but here I am, fifty years later. While on council, I was known as Cheapskate Romano. I mean, it's a common, I wear that badge with honor because it was always about the money. I never wanted to spend the money, and every time money came up, Romano was always against spending the money. I'm always looking out for my constituents. I'm on social security with my wife like a lot of our seniors. I'm careful how I spend our money. If I'm gonna spend our money, I make darn sure I'm spending it for a good reason. Now let me tell you why I'm here. I want to talk about the safety issue. Remember, it's a renewal. That's what it is. The millage is a renewal. It's gonna cost each individual homeowner approximately, and we talked about this, about a hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a year per household. But you have to realize, in those six years that we've had this billage going, we've hired forty new police officers, twenty new firefighters. If you're ready for this, our senior population, and I'm one of them, over sixty-five is approximately six percent and growing, sixty percent and growing. If I need to dial nine-one-one, I want help now. That first millage was to last for six years, and during this time, we were sure the state would refund a large portion of our revenue sharing, not only ours, but a lot of other cities. Well, this didn't happen. The state, they balanced their budget on the backs of people like Sterling Heights, Warren, Centerline, Grand Rapids, and on and on, keeping that money that we should have had. So as a result, we had to make up the difference. This world is changing. It seems like, like violence now is, it's more pronounced than ever, and I want to continue to keep Sterling Heights safe. Our police and fire department, they're the best in the state, and we've gotten so many awards, we can't even count them. And we just recently heard we're one of the safest cities, not only in the state, but in the country. Pretty soon, the absentee ballots are coming out, and I want to go on record to say that I support this millage, not like our governor that says, let's fix the damn streets. Sterling Heights is doing it, and they're doing it with this millage. I hope each and every one of our residents that vote will vote in this election. I want to keep Sterling Heights, one of the safest city in the country, and to all of our residents, please support the renewal. Have a good night, people.
All right, thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Romano. Always a pleasure to see you. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, and we'll move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Kachubski?
We do have one item tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, I'll open it up for reports or new business. Mr. Yeniz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, so first of all, I want to say, last week, we had the opportunity to go to the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Detroit. It's, Michigan Municipal League is an incredible organization that really helps cities throughout the state of Michigan with a number of issues, taking care of important issues of the day, but also looking down the road and the future of all cities here in the state of Michigan. Also been fighting for us that, that revenue sharing that hasn't been coming back from the state, they've been on the front lines fighting for that as well. Over the last three years, Sterling Heights City Manager Mark Vanderpool has served on the board, his term ended, and I want to thank Mark Vanderpool for all the work that he's done on behalf of Sterling Heights through the Michigan Municipal League. And because Mark's leaving doesn't mean we're without support. We have a new person on the Michigan Municipal, Michigan Municipal League Board of Trustees. My seatmate, Councilwoman Barb Ziarco, has been appointed to the Board of Trustees, and I want to congratulate Barb, and I know she's gonna do a great job.
Thank you.
Representing us in every city in the state of Michigan. Mr. Taylor, Mayor Taylor, I also want to congratulate you on, on the State of the City address. It was a top-notch presentation, and everybody, I don't know who was behind the scenes putting that all together, but I know you worked personally very hard on that speech, and I want to congratulate you and everybody who took the time, including the Sterling Heights Chamber of Commerce as well, did a fantastic job. And then the last thing I want to say is, you know, we had a lot of presentations here. The police chief, fire chief spoke about how safe our city is, and then we also got a presentation for Blessings in a Backpack, and, you know, recognizing the Firefighters Union and the Police Officers Association, you know, I, I don't know if people realize the work that city employees do outside their day-to-day jobs. They are involved in the city. The firefighters also helped me, I do, I help a particular organization with food, some of the toughest families in, in the, in the county, and the firefighters are there helping me provide food for the families during the holiday season. It's firefighters, the cops, I know they get a lot of recognition, but we also need to recognize our folks in the DPW. We had this flood. You know, we had our, our monthly hundred-year flood. It seems like we're getting them all the time now, and that's a lot of work, whether it's a flood, whether it's a snowstorm, the people over at DPW keeping those trucks on the road, working twenty-four hours, they do a lot of work. The, the employees of the city really work hard, and they go above and beyond constantly, and that's one of the reasons why we're one of the best cities in, in the country, one of the safest, but also one of the best to live in. And then having said that, I just want to ask all my, not just my council members, but everybody who lives in, in the city of Sterling Heights to think about their neighbors. We just had a, a presentation for Blessings in a Backpack, and I think the number was, what, sixty-six thousand meals? We have, I know people who do Meals on Wheels on a regular basis. Food insecurity is a real problem in one of the safest cities in America. And I think we are the safest chief, one of the safest large city in the state of Michigan, the safest large city in the state of Michigan. But that doesn't mean we don't have problems, and one of the problems that we have is food insecurity for our seniors and for our children. So I do this thing every, every month on the twenty-fifth, I, I post a picture of a Christmas tree, and I let people know Christmas is down the road. They hate me like in June and July when I post this, but I did it in September twenty-fifth. There's only ninety days till Christmas, and the holidays are coming, and that's feast time, and there's a lot of people that are gonna be struggling to have any food at all during that time. So I hope that everyone who's listening, you know, consider helping out organizations like Blessings in a Backpack, or, you know, giving through their, their local PTO or whatever, but, you know, helping out the neighbors. If you're doing well, whatever you can do to help your neighbors get through some difficult times is greatly appreciated. And I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all the city workers, the police officers, the firefighters, everybody up and down the line, but also the citizens who are here tonight that take the time to clean up their yards and make their yards look nice, make the city look nice. Again, this is a beautiful city. People put a lot of time, a lot of effort into, into their homes, into their neighborhoods, and just going that extra and just going that extra step further and then helping out your neighbors who are having difficult times. So I didn't mean to editorialize. I was kind of all over the place, but it really is, food insecurity is a really important issue, and I think just as we're patting ourselves on the back about what a great city we are, we also have to think about the, the people who are having difficulty and the organizations that help them out. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Yenness. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. To kind of piggyback on Mr. Yenness, first of all, you stole my thunder because I was going to congratulate Mrs. Ziarco myself. Congratulations. I am, I am. And I will tell you that year after year, Mrs. Ziarco and I have sat at MML, and she is never afraid to ask tough questions and on behalf of the residents of the, of the city, and she really, she really loves the city, and, and that's why she's volunteering for one more thing to help our city out and within the state. And I appreciate your time that you're putting into MML and on behalf of all of us. And as far as Blessings in a Backpack, you're right, Mr. Yenness, there is a need, and Mr. Maynard was a representative from Utica Community Schools. I will tell you that Warren Consolidated Schools has the same program. The backpacks are actually packed at the Career Prep Center where I work. I believe the statistic for Warren Con is they have 80 more families than Utica that just live in the Sterling Heights, in the city of Sterling Heights. So those folks are just as busy in, in the south end of our city, and, and they all need our support to see what some of these kids have lived through that none of us even want to imagine, and to be hungry, and to come to a teacher and say, do you have a muffin? Because, you know, we don't have anything. It's heartbreaking. So these organizations really do need our help. It is here. It's in our community. We, you know, a lot, a lot of places don't want to feel that there's poverty, but it is here. So I encourage you, like Mr. Yenness has said, to please help those, those organizations. And one last thing, can we do some business through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool? So I had the pleasure, displeasure, of driving Fox Hill from Dequender to Ryan yesterday. Holy smokes. Do we know when that's going to be done? Because it is like a landmine.
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, the good news is, it will be done this construction season. It will be kicking off soon. It's a resurfacing, so it'll go pretty quickly, and you'll notice a vast improvement very soon.
I mean, it's ground. It's already ground down, so we just need to fill it in.
Yeah, it's going to be done. It'll be finished up this construction.
The craters fit cars, so it's bad. And I really feel for the residents on that end of Fox Hill. I know, I know the easterly end has already been completed, but wow, it was really bad. So, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else? Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to congratulate Councilwoman Ziarco for her appointment to the Michigan Municipal League Board. I think she's going to do great things there. I had the pleasure of attending the conference with Councilman Yenness and Councilwoman Ziarco. I thought there were so many good presentations about how other cities are working through some of the same problems we are, including the one from Rochester Hills Mayor Brian Burnett, who really had an amazing speech about all the things he's doing out there. Then I went literally from the conference to our State of the City, and I got to watch Mr. Mayor give an excellent speech. I know I couldn't do it as good as you do, so congratulations, Mr. Mayor. It was really well done. Then I got on a plane, I flew to Minneapolis for one of my best friend's wedding. And while in Minneapolis, I had the pleasure of meeting with Councilman Cam Gordon from Ward Three. He's the Chair of the Housing and Zoning Committee in Minneapolis. For those of you out there who don't know what they're doing in Minneapolis, they have an amazing program for placemaking, upzoning, affordable housing, public safety, and high-speed mass transit. And he took me on a little tour of Nicolet Avenue and some of the things they're doing there, and it was fascinating. I thought it was kind of him to meet with me. Minneapolis is a city of 460,000, but when I sent him a request just to talk about all these things, you know, Nicolet Avenue in Minneapolis is a bus-only street. It used to be a pedestrian mall. Now they run high-speed buses through the center of their city, which improves travel times almost by about 50%, they said. It also has tremendous outdoor patio space. Everyone kind of sits out there at night, listens to music, it's a jazz club, all kinds of fascinating things. But also, they, they really, you know, doubled down on affordable housing, because what I think is happening in Minneapolis is going to happen in Sterling Heights. Right now, 51% of people in Minneapolis rent rather than own, because housing prices are exceeding the ability of young people coming out of the, coming out of college and in their first jobs to buy houses. So they're electing to rent rather than own, and they're trying to do a tremendous amount to basically stem that tide and reverse it. In Sterling Heights, 70% of our residents own their own home, which is a great thing. But they said that just 20 years ago in Minneapolis, it was more like 65% homeowners. So over the last 20 years, that trend has almost reversed. So I thought it was a great presentation by them and some interesting ideas. I don't think we're ever going to do what Minneapolis did, but they upzoned almost every single-family home in their, in their area to be up to a triplex if you wanted to build it. If you don't want to build a triplex, you're allowed to add on a granny flat or build one in your backyard, because it's such a housing crisis that they have there. It was very fascinating and interesting, and also talked a little bit about public safety, all the things that they're doing there to interact with the community, almost what we're doing here already. You know, they talk about they're just rolling out a core program that we have. So we're really on the cutting edge here in Sterling Heights. All I had for my report, I just wanted to thank Councilman Cam Gordon again for meeting with me, and for Minneapolis for being a great city to, to walk around in and spend some time. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else from Mrs. Kachubski?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to mention in regard to Blessings in a Backpack, if you checked your backup material and read it carefully, you would have recognized a name. It's Kachubski, which I have a hard time with.
I don't recognize that name, sorry.
His father was part of setting that up years ago. Is that correct?
My father and my stepmother, she, they were both part of setting up Blessings Backpack Michigan, which is the parent organization for all of the spokes that you're seeing, Utica, Warren Consolidated Schools, Mount Clemens, just go around the horn, so.
So wouldn't you encourage all members of council to get involved on Wednesday? At what time was it? 6:30?
Four.
Four o'clock. I'm sorry.
I wouldn't.
And also, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Ziarco again, being appointed to, or I should say, being elected to Board of Trustees. She's following the trend here in Sterling Heights. Started with Mr. Duchaine, and then myself, and then Mr. Vanderpool, MML, and of course, Ms. Ziarco next. MML seems to love having Sterling Heights represented on the Board of Trustees. So I challenge the rest of you. You've got three years. Get ready. One of you is going to volunteer for the Board of Trustees, three years. And in the meantime, I expect you to volunteer to be a moderator like Mr. Yenness did, or even being a speaker on one of the panels, and join some of the boards and commissions because they're great, and you will learn when you teach. So I encourage you to participate. It's a great organization, and like I said, Sterling Heights is well-received there at the league. So that's all, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Kachubski. Anyone else on council?
I'm going to go first.
Mrs. Sarowski.
You can have your final words.
I just want to thank everybody for, you know.
Oh, I should just jump you. Mrs. Sarowski. Yeah, we'll let you go next.
I knew you wanted to do this, so I wanted to congratulate you also. Final council person here, there will be a mayor, I'm sure, who will also do that, but congratulations, you serve our city very well, and we do appreciate all that you can do. I, I'm very, very happy to see that you're there, and I know that you'll keep us well-represented, and you'll keep us informed, and you'll do great things. So congratulations again, Ms. Ziarco. And also for Mrs. Kachubski, I also will take up that as soon as I get a kid out of college, will be able to at least not work so hard. So that's, you know, those darn kids and their, those bills that they require, who's texting me as we speak, needing more money. So, but we will, we are happy to be represented by who we have, and then we will take up that challenge when we can. And again, to our newest little puppy, welcome aboard. Thank you very much for all our officers and our firefighters for doing such good work. But the most thing that we need to remember, residents, is safe streets is so very, very important. Yes, it was initiated as a part-time, quick fix until we got our revenue sharing back as a council commissioner, Joe Romano mentioned, those, that money never came back to us. So now, now we have the ability to keep our services, so please remember, that is why we are asking, and that's why we're supporting it. And so hopefully, we will all continue in our roles with the Safe Streets Millage passing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski.
Now.
Mrs. Ziarco.
Oh, thank you. I, you know, it's interesting to go last, but you can say, I'm not afraid to jump in when I have something to say.
No kidding.
But I want to thank everybody for having the faith in me to go and serve at this level in the Michigan Municipal League. It certainly doesn't, it, it means that I really am following in some great footsteps. And I, I actually don't remember when Mr. Duchaine was on the board, but I did remember when Mrs. Kachubski was. And there were many times when Mr. Vanderpool would drive Mrs. Kachubski and Mrs. Schmidt and myself, and we knew that Deanna had a meeting, and then the rest of us would kind of do whatever we had to until she was finished with her meeting. So you did understand a lot of the responsibility, but it really, you know, I've always thought the timing wasn't right, and I knew they were never going to put two people from Sterling Heights on the board at the same time. So I knew when Mr. Vanderpool's term was up that it might be something that I had the time to do now and I really wanted to do. So, and that's why when I would say to residents, you know, we're not getting our funding, and you stand at the podium and you, and you count every dime that the city council spends, but you don't go after the state for the money that they owe us, I'm thinking, well, I was doing something about it, but maybe I'm not doing enough. So I'm hoping that I'll have a voice at the MML, and I'll be able to help the city, not just our city, but all cities throughout the state recoup some of that revenue sharing that we voted on as justly ours, and we're not getting. So that's pretty much my primary issue. Blessings in a Backpack is probably one of the finest things I think that we can get involved in, and I think what we saw tonight means that more of us might want to take a chance, and maybe you can't go every week, but you could go some weeks to help them out. But it isn't just here in Sterling Heights, and I always think of this as that we are not an island. It happens outside, and there are people that even have less than that. I mean, that don't even have the person that's packing the backpack for them or giving them six meals. It's, they're on the street, they don't have a roof over their head, and if you think that it doesn't happen in Sterling Heights, I'm sorry, but it really, really does. And if you're saying to yourself, well, it doesn't happen in my school, it happens in your school. So I think this is something that's worthwhile and that we could all become involved in. So hopefully, I'm going to take a shot at it and see if I can volunteer when they need help. And thank you again for listening to me. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Ziarco, and I echo my colleagues. Congratulations to you. It's great to be represented at the MML level. It's a great organization that represents hundreds and hundreds of municipalities throughout the state of Michigan, and we've talked a lot about how Sterling Heights needs to have a more prominent role at the table, and, you know, this is, I know Mr. Vanderpool represented the city very well. Great to have an elected official on the board, and I'm looking forward to seeing everything that you can do for our city through that organization. So congratulations to you, and thank you to my colleagues who mentioned the State of the City. If you haven't seen it, I know it's available through the city's YouTube channel, I believe, on the city's Facebook page. It is a speech that is written, and, and really, it's meant for the residents of the city of Sterling Heights. This year, I tried to talk about a few core values that the city tries to embody in everything that it does, and those core values are vibrancy, inclusiveness, safety, activity, progressiveness, and distinctiveness. And all of those things, I think, help to create a great quality of life here in the city of Sterling Heights. So if you haven't had a chance to watch it, I hope you'll take some time to, to look at it on the city's website. There's a lot of hard work that goes into it, and I'm not just talking about myself. The guys downstairs, Bob and Dan, do a tremendous amount of work. There's something like, the first year we did it, I just basically talked, and I could see a lot of people nodding off, and, you know, as, as my colleagues probably know, sometimes I like to talk, and it's not always the most interesting subject. So the first year, I was just talking and very little actual video behind me, and over the years, we've increased that and increased that. And what we did two years ago, or last year, is had some videos that the guys downstairs put together, some great videos to give the audience something to follow along with. And I think we had something like five or six videos, and this year, we had 32 videos. And what, what it means for me is, I got to be talking to, what I'm saying has to match up with the video behind my shoulder. So that takes a lot of effort for those, for those guys to cut those videos. They're out at events throughout the entire year, and they're splicing those videos together. They're, they're showing them throughout the year on our YouTube channels. They just do a tremendous job. Bob and Dan are amazing, amazing at what they do, and we're really, really lucky to have such highly talented people here. Megan Ahearn in Mr. Vanderpool's office is just incredible. She was helpful in everything. And, and our new community relations director, Melanie Davis, it really didn't miss a beat from last year with her at the helm in community relations. So those, those four in particular deserve a ton of the credit, and really, it's, it's everybody, including the people here, you know, police chief and fire chief, DPW director, they all helped contribute thoughts and ideas for what we're going to do to celebrate the city of Sterling Heights and the great residents that we have who live here. So I just want to take that brief second to recognize those folks who helped me put that together. So thank you very much. Congratulations again to everybody who was awarded today with a beautification award. Congratulations to our police and fire departments for their hard work. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved, support.
Been moved and supported. Can we please have a roll call vote? Ms. Riska.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yenness?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kachubski?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, seven zero. We will be adjourning into closed session, and we will not be returning. Thank you.